Online or join via phone. You can always visit our website for more. We have Mark McGlaughlin, our Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McHale, our NIPA Assignment Manager. At this time, I would like to welcome back Tony Tanoco, our moderator for the virtual hearing to outline the protocols. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. I'll be serving as the moderator and will go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on Interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you'd like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and search for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note that it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state your first and last name, and if applicable, the organization they are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say "No comment," and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. This time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not get the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website, by email, or by mail. Please visit our website for more details at www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a 10-minute break. I will announce the break time and start time each hour. This public hearing will continue until 8:00 p.m., so it is normal to hear silence as we wait for commenters to join online or by phone. Again, if you'd like to comment today, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen, and I will call in your name. We may repeat these instructions from time to time throughout the hour for those who are just joining us. Thank you. Okay, we will go to our phone list. Again, if you're calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted, so that is your cue to give your comment. But if you wish to not give a comment over the phone, simply say "No comment," and we'll move on to our next caller. So on the phone, if you can please spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with.
John Spalding, current Indian Memorial County Building and Construction Trace Council. Support the EIR.
Thank you.
........................................................................
Good morning, Sandra. Well, it's kind of like they used to say in The Lone Ranger, "Who is that masked man or masked woman?" It's "Who is that masked congressman?" A lot of members wearing masks as they debate this bill on the House floor this morning to sync up with the Senate. $484 billion in this bill. Remember, they bled that small business fund dry, and they need to plus that back up. The original request was $251 billion, and so it went up significantly. Republicans say Democrats delayed help to small businesses.
I'm sorry that Congress could not act as we wanted to two weeks before, so we never would have had to shut down. For those who got laid off last week because Congress would not act, that's unbecoming. That is not the action. We are better than that as a Congress.
But Democrats contest that point. House Speaker Nancy Pelosi pushed for the hospital and testing money. The speaker argues Democrats made the bill better, securing $60 billion in small business assistance for lower-income communities and rural areas.
The fact is, is that there are many small businesses that do not have the same kind of relationships with banks that make them, on a first-comfort serve basis, be able to benefit. This has been a drastic change, and as a leader said, "Make a difference for the future as we deal with it."
Now, there's going to be some noes on this bill, some fiscal conservatives. Also, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez from New York has expressed some reservation about this bill. Two votes today. The first vote will be to actually establish an Oversight Committee, a select committee dealing with coronavirus, and then they will vote on the coronavirus bill. We're only thinking about 300-plus members will be here today, and the votes are going to look a little bit different. They're going to divide the House of Representatives into nine blocks of about 50-plus members and have them file into the House chamber in those blocks. Each member has 30 seconds to vote, and then they ask them to leave and retreat to their offices. This is going to be very different than any other set of roll call votes ever taken before in the history of the House of Representatives. It will probably take a couple of hours to complete these roll call votes compared to about 25 minutes. And in between those votes, they will close the House down for a recess and scrub the chamber, and then do it all again. Sandra?
Quite a visual, but what has to be done at this time? Chad Pergram, thank you.
I don't have a fascination with getting involved in media bias. I was dragged into it, kicking and screaming.
Everywhere I go, there's someone that will point me out.
Laura Logan has no agenda. Bias in the Media. Available now, only on Fox Nation.
This will ensure that unemployed Americans of all backgrounds will be first in line for jobs as our economy reopens. Crucially, it will also preserve our healthcare resources for American workers. That's what we're doing.
So President Trump's executive order to halt some legal immigration amid the COVID-19 pandemic takes effect today. The measure, which makes exceptions for a variety of cases, including those seeking temporary visas, is set for 60 days, though the president says he can extend it if the timeframe, if need be. So here now with the details on that order, Acting Secretary of Homeland Security Chad Wolf. Sir, good to see you. Thank you very much for being here tonight. There's criticism of this on both sides, and one of them is that it has too many exclusions, that it includes people who are already living and working here, those who are seeking to become legal permanent residents, medical professionals, farmworkers, those who enter on a temporary non-immigrant visa, also unaffected. Also, the spouses and underage children of U.S. citizens are unaffected. Who does that leave that is actually going to be affected by this?
Well, thank you for having me, Martha. And I think what we see here is this is a very targeted approach that the president has taken. So it affects new immigrants that are coming to the U.S. These are individuals that are competing with Americans for jobs, basically any job in any industry. And that's really what the president is targeting. So these are new immigrants coming to the U.S.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director for the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd like to welcome and thank you for your participating in today's virtual public hearing. Due to the complications caused by the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, in California, the authority has changed the format of the public hearing from an in-person public hearing to a virtual public hearing. We appreciate your patience and understanding. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental analysis, alternatives, impacts, and mitigation measures presented in the Bakersfield-Palm Dale Project Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. This public hearing is being held in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA, and to facilitate the goals of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. Your input is very important to us and will help us continue developing the California High Speed Rail project. We have a court reporter online to capture your oral comments as part of the transcription for this public hearing. In addition, we have a Spanish translator who will provide simultaneous translation of the comments submitted during the hearing and provide any persons with assistance in submitting and oral comments. You can submit your comments today by joining this public hearing online or by calling in via phone. You should see on your screen detailed information on how to join online or join via screen. You can also visit our website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield-Palm Dale Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. We are here to listen to your comments, and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process, and our job this afternoon is to listen, listen to, and record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield-Palm Dale Final Environmental Analysis Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. Before we get started, I would like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel: myself, Diana Gomez, Mark McGlaughlin, Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McHale, the NIPA Assignment Manager. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Tony Tanoco, our moderator, for this virtual hearing to outline the protocols. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. I'll be serving as the moderator and will go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on Interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you'd like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and search for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note that it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state your first and last name, and if applicable, the organization you are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say "No comment," and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. The time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not be given the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comments are accurate. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website, by email, or by mail. Please visit our website for more details at www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a 10-minute break. I will announce the break time and start time each hour. This public hearing will continue until 8:00 p.m. today. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments only, so it is normal to hear silence as we wait for commenters to join online or by phone. Again, if you would like to comment today, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen, and I will call on your name. We may repeat these instructions from time to time throughout the hour for those who are just joining us. Thank you.